You're going to call to order the city council meeting of the twenty-second of April two thousand and twenty-five. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Stand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag of the British Empire. One nation, under God.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Quorm is present for our city council successor agency, housing authority, parking authority, and joint powers authority.
Okay. Before we go to public comment, we have an announcement to make. The SEMAF-based tournament championship, IYSL girls' basketball C-division. The champions are Inglewood girls' C-division basketball team. Would you stand up and be recognized right now? If anybody has any trophies, could we lift them up so we could take pictures of them right now? We're going to do that. Okay? And right now, we have certificates for the coaches. We also have certificates. Councilwoman Falk made sure of that for the children, but there are thirty-five of them. And so, we weren't going to be able to give out thirty-five certificates right now, but could we have everyone that's here and involved stand over there by that seal over on the wall? And we're going to take a group picture with the city council.
Yes, all the coaches too. No coaches?
They're coaches.
Yeah, the girls and the coaches. Cowboy.
Okay, could we have all the coaches come on?
Yes.
Five Southern Californians. This one. Assle, led the boys' A-division team to victory, carrying both the SEMAF-based championship and the regional championship. Joe Casey, leadership, teamwork at every level. Celebrate Coach Jabril's guidance and commitment to the girls. SEMAF teachers. Also acknowledge Coach and Jewel, Coach Derek. Our commission would have to complete. Audrey General Brownie, proudly known as Coach Cowboy. Department Director Kathy Garrett. And Lady Lady, which is sports school, proud champion. Proudly commend those coaches and leaders for their dedication, mentorship, and championship spirit. Their contributions have brought pride to the city of Inglewood and reflect the very best of what community sports can represent, presented this twenty-second day of April two thousand and twenty-five. All right. Coaches in California. Let's see. Let's see. Okay.
Hold on one quick second.
Let me see. Okay, so we go to item one, excuse me, public comment. Any persons wishing to address Inglewood City Council's successor agency, housing authority, parking authority, and a JPA on any item on today's agenda may do so at this time.
Mayor and Councilman Marvin McCoy, I wanted to speak on DR one. The Inglewood Transit Connector Project. It seemed like this project has expanded in scope. And just want to get some clarification of what this action this council will take today will do, because it appears that the council is implementing a traffic mitigation program, but it's contingent on a couple of things happening. One is contingent on the Inglewood Transit Connector coming here, but based on your own staff report and previous development, you guys don't have the funding. So, this is a preservation. Are these projects going to go along? Or this project or this, what you're asking today, is it going to happen independent of the, if you don't get the correct funding or sufficient funding for the Inglewood Transit Connector? Because it seemed like this is, what this item does is a bait and switch, because it was never explained in a two-phase, in two phases. Because now what you're talking about doing is assessing parking, acquiring land to get more parking, but it was never described that way. And from my understanding, the proposal that Elevate Partners presented before never included the two-phase project. So, if this is an extension of that project, you would think that project would have went out to bid, because it's not what they were submitted it for. And then now you're, and also in the staff report, which is interesting, because this doesn't tell anything, you're still saying that you're going to have private entities like SoFi, and they're going to contribute, but we haven't seen that contribution yet. In fact, from the L.A. Times, they said they didn't want any part of this project. So, based upon your staff report, the ITC won't be built until after the Olympics. So, based upon the estimates, we know the initial estimates won't be the same estimates after the two-twenty-eight. So, it seems like, I'm not saying anything, but the city is misleading the community and taxpayers about the viability of this project. And since we're talking about that, it was said by Steve Ballmer that he was going to donate a hundred million dollars towards an affordable housing project, and we haven't seen that yet. So, how in good faith, when he's already said he doesn't want any part of this project, doesn't want to be a part of it, even Maxine Waters shot it down, how can we in good faith do we actually believe this project's ever going to come to fruition?
Miss you, Marvin. Next.
Good afternoon. To the most honorable Mayor J.C. Butts, and to the esteemed members of the city council, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Padilla, Councilman, my own Councilman, Councilman Morales, and Councilwoman Dionne Falk. I greet you today with all respect and gratitude and the peace of the Lord Jesus Christ. I am Bishop Johnny J. Young, the senior pastor of Miracle Temple Church of God, Pentecostal in Inglewood. We're located just over one-point-one mile from SoFi Stadium and the Intuit Dome, right in the heart of Inglewood. I come before you today in strong support of the Inglewood Transit Connector. As a pastor, I hear the concerns of our people, and this project speaks directly to their needs. One, it will ease the traffic that overwhelms the streets on game and event days. Two, it will bring new jobs and opportunities to our residents. Three, it will help protect God's creation by improving our air quality. I also want to lift up the need for revitalization of the Market Street. Since COVID, that once vibrant stretch has grown quiet. And I remember over fifty years ago, walking these streets, the life that used to fill the corridors. And I believe with God's help and your leadership, we can see the return. Over the past fourteen years, we have witnessed the transformative leadership of our Mayor Butts and this unified council. And I am both confident and prayerful that the best days for Inglewood are still ahead. I want to thank you for hearing me today, and please know that each of your names is lifted up daily on our prayer list for our church family and the intercessors all across this nation every day and abroad. And finally, on behalf of the Inglewood Area Ministers Association and our president, Reverend Warren Henderson, thank you for supporting the very special event, the National Day of Prayer on May first, twelve noon, right here at the City Hall lawn. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for just twenty minutes of united prayer, and the prayer break was the same morning, May first, at seven a.m. at the Pride Brewery Ballroom. And thank you all, Councilman, Councilwoman, and Mayor, for standing with us in the faith community and pushing the table. May God bless you and guide your decisions today and cover this city with peace and prosperity for the next six to seven years when I'm one hundred and forty. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor Butts and esteemed council. My name is Ricardo Rosales, and I'm the director of the Midnight Mission Home Life Family Living Program. This year, we're celebrating thirty years of service here in Inglewood. I've been the director of the Midnight Mission Home Life Program for the last twenty years, and I'm a proud supporter of the Inglewood Transit Connector Project. Over the last twenty years that I've been here, I've seen the renaissance that's developed here in Inglewood, and all the sports teams and venues and the renowned events that have happened here. Over the last, let's say, five years, our families here at the program have benefited because some of the jobs are available here at the program, at the events, locations. While they are not career-defining positions, they are positions that get our families back into the work environment, to get them back into working and to help build their self-esteem. They've taken advantage of sporting events. A lot of the teams invite our families and our kids to go to the games and to all the activations they have at the centers, at the event centers. I'm so excited about the new direction that the ITC project is taking and the benefits that will come to the improvements in the city transit system. Our families will continue to benefit from them, and I too have a personal reason why I like this, because I aspire, no, I don't aspire, I'm going to open up a new business here in Inglewood by the end of the year, so we too will benefit from the ITC project. Thank you so much.
All right.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor Butts and esteemed council. My name is Ricardo Rosales, and I'm the director of the Midnight Mission Home Life Family Living Program. This year, we're celebrating thirty years of service here in Inglewood. I've been the director of the Midnight Mission Home Life Program for the last twenty years, and I'm a proud supporter of the Inglewood Transit Connector Project. Over the last twenty years that I've been here, I've seen the renaissance that's developed here in Inglewood, and all the sports teams and venues and the renowned events that have happened here. Over the last, let's say, five years, our families here at the program have benefited because some of the jobs are available here at the program, at the events, locations. While they are not career-defining positions, they are positions that get our families back into the work environment, to get them back into working and to help build their self-esteem. They've taken advantage of sporting events. A lot of the teams invite our families and our kids to go to the games and to all the activations they have at the centers, at the event centers. I'm so excited about the new direction that the ITC project is taking and the benefits that will come to the improvements in the city transit system. Our families will continue to benefit from them, and I too have a personal reason why I like this, because I aspire, no, I don't aspire, I'm going to open up a new business here in Inglewood by the end of the year, so we too will benefit from the ITC project. Thank you so much.
All right.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor Butts and city council. I am here to support the ITC project. My name is Mari Morales. I am the founder and president of the nonprofit organization One For All Ofa Kids. I have been helping the students and the families in the city for more than twenty years, and I am proud resident and proud supporter of the Inglewood Transit Connector Project. My organization, One For All Ofa, has been serving the community, I said already, for more than twenty years, and I will say it again and again. The refacing of the ITC will bring Market Street to create a downtown area where our youth and their families can shop, dine, relax within our community. We will no longer have to leave our city and spend our money somewhere else. It will help with all the traffic on event days and make it easier for us residents to benefit from the new transit system, along with all the visitors. And it will benefit all the students that we serve, because we have, also have been invited to different games and to different events, and definitely we are here to support the ITC project.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Butts and city council members. My name is Cheryl Shaw-Williams. I am a proud resident of District Four. I'm a product of Inglewood Unified School District. I serve on the Morningside Monarcher Luminai Association Board, and I am under the superb leadership of Councilwoman Dionne Falk. I am here today to express my full support of Inglewood Transit Connector and the Market Street revitalization. As a longtime resident, my family moved here in nineteen sixty-five. I've seen the city's evolution firsthand. I remember what downtown Inglewood looked like. My mom and I would shop at Boston stores, at J.C. Penney's, and I especially remember the big sales at the Boston store, because that usually meant that I would skip a day from school. The ITC is an exciting and essential step forward. It will bring a host of visitors into Inglewood to dine, to shop, to enjoy the vibrant entertainment district, much like the Metro Blue Line that connects Long Beach to downtown L.A. and Crypto Arena. The Inglewood Transit Connector will provide easy access to our worldwide venues like SoFi, the Kia Forum, and the Intuit Dome. I work in Long Beach. I've seen how my coworkers and as well as myself rely on the transit to avoid parking hassles and save time. The ITC will offer the same convenience in Inglewood and with it, increase foot traffic and support our local businesses, especially on Market Street. This project is about progress, opportunity, and pride in our city. I am a hundred percent in support of bringing Inglewood to the next level. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Butts and council members. I am a proud resident of Inglewood and also a business owner. I'm in the childcare industry, and I am in full support of the ITC. I also agree with a lot of the other constituents here that the revitalization of Market Street and the support of the ITC will provide, and I'm all for the traffic, mind you. I work in the childcare industry, so we're up and down Manchester, Florence, many different routes. We're going to Frank D. Parent in Inglewood, we're going to Cowan, we're going to Play Vista, and the traffic is just insane. I'm sitting in traffic that would normally take me about a good fifteen minutes, you know, there and back. I'm a good forty-five. And so, I am all for it. My name is Monet Morris. I didn't start there. I'm also in support of it, you know, for the air quality. It'll create a healthier environment for my children and the children that I serve in our community. The ITC adds value to our city. It will connect seventeen thousand people. It would connect seventeen thousand people to jobs, businesses, entertainment venues, and attractions. Also, a strong, strong, strong candidate just of community support. I think that our community also deserves, you know, better eateries, grocery stores, food that we can go and dine. We shouldn't have to go out of our city to get, you know, good quality foods or just whatever, and good and safe entertainment. So, I am in full support of the ITC and the revitalization of Market Street.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmen and women, the staff that keeps this city running and all the constituents that are in here, tenants. My name is Odessa Riley. Born and raised here, Saginela Hospital, Highland, Crozier, Inglewood High. And it's crazy. Every project that this city works on, there's a bunch of people will pop up and say, we shouldn't do anything. Forgive me if I'm not wrong, Mayor, but was there any traffic issues before the stadiums were built?
For decades.
Right, so, I was playing basketball at Saginela Park, blood, sweat, and tears, so that I could get out of here. And I left, learned how to make money, and decided to come home. And the thing that blows me when we're in here arguing over stuff is that any time that we're trying to move forward, there's always a problem. Nothing's perfect, nothing ever will be, but standing still is never the way to get anything done. So, I come to support the ITC project, because for me, having my first job on Market Street, Inglewood Sports, nobody's coming down the street. Go down the street, nobody coming down it now. It's finally starting to pick up. We have the theater, we have the Nile Bar, things that are starting to drive some traffic, but it needs work. Transit Connector allow people to put money into it, to make it revitalize it. I manage buildings on that street now. I'd love to have more foot traffic. I think we get caught up in the fact that we want everything to always come in in a way that it's going to not affect anybody, but that's not how the change happens. Change happens by putting in effort. If you want to get bigger when you're in the gym, you have to lift heavier weight. You can't just show up and do nothing. So, I support this project. I think we should move this project forward, and once again, we got to keep going.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Butts and council members. Thank you for your consideration of the Inglewood Transit Connector today. My name is Hillary Norton, and I have been a proud supporter of the Inglewood Transit Connector Program since my days as a California Transportation Commissioner and Chair of the CTC, where we voted for funding for this project, because it was one of the most important projects that the state could do in terms of moving.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Butts and council members. Thank you for your consideration of the Inglewood Transit Connector today. My name is Hillary Norton and I have been a proud supporter of the Inglewood Transit Connector Program since my days as a California Transportation Commissioner and Chair of the CTC, where we voted for funding for this project because it was one of the most important projects the state could do in terms of moving cities forward. This reimagined approach meets the moment of the day-to-day needs of Inglewood and the needs of Inglewood as a host of global events in 2026, 2028, and beyond. In my new role as co-founder of the Festival Trail, I am pleased to continue my support of the ITC as an opportunity to encourage people to travel to venues by transit, to ensure that Inglewood can prosper rather than be stuck in traffic, that Market Street can be revitalized, and on today, Earth Day, that Inglewood's air quality can improve every day. Transformation, as the previous speaker just said, doesn't happen easily and it doesn't happen gracefully, but it has to happen. And I thank you all for making transformation happen today.
Oh, hi. My name is Zach Salvin. I'm the CEO of Black Equities and we're a property owner in the city of Inglewood. We are the owner of the Astor on Market Street and the Fox Theater, as well as a few other parcels. And we just want to give our support to the mayor and the council for all the wonderful things that they're doing to improve Market Street and Inglewood overall as a whole. We couldn't be more proud. And if there's anything we can do to help with the relocation of businesses and also help the small businesses that need homes, you know, it would be our pleasure to be involved in the process. I just want to thank everybody for all the wonderful things that you're doing.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Steve Cotton. I am the owner of the Inglewood Clothing Store on La Brea and Centinela. When people come to the city, they often stop by my place to get souvenirs, T-shirts, caps, and things like that. And we want to bring more people to our city. I feel like Inglewood is the best city in America and we want to bring more people, we want to bring more traffic to our city. And I think it's very important that we get Market Street back. I think it's important to get Market Street thriving once again. I am in support of the ITC and I'm looking forward to the changes in Inglewood. Thank you.
Steve, forty seconds, Eliot.
Mayor, City Council, City Staff and Residents. My name is Owen Smith, owner of the Miracle Theater Inglewood located on South Market Street. My wife and I are proud downtown Inglewood business owners as well as the founders of our nonprofit that supports local artists and entertainment and venue professionals. We've been in the city now for almost a decade. We've seen the transformational changes that have happened to the city while we've been here. Since 2015, we've envisioned the revitalization of Inglewood's downtown historic core and have always played our role in this meaningful process. We support the Inglewood Transit Connector Project. Its proposed Phase One improvements will energize historic downtown Market Street, sparking even more programming at the Miracle. We wholeheartedly believe that our downtown needs to reflect the positive changes that have come and thanks to Inglewood's impactful city leadership, this project can help make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ed Mullfler and I am here representing David Illulian, who is a business owner on the street, Market Street, has been for twenty years. He is a huge supporter of this project because he knows, as a businessperson, as an operator, the impact that it will have. He likened it to remembering what happened to Third Street and know what Third Street is now in Santa Monica. And then in Colorado, they had the same thing, Colorado Avenue. Property going through troubles. So he is absolutely a believer that it will improve traffic. It'll improve walkability. It'll improve overall, you know, air quality because of the things that are gonna be done as a part of it. So he is, I'm here supporting him and he is in full support of this project. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. That was just public, Lisa, we're not there yet. We aren't there yet. Item one, CSA one and H one. Receiving file, M one.
Approval of the minutes for the, excuse me, for the meetings held on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five and March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Consent count, items two and three.
Move approval.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. DR one.
Staff report recommending the mayor and council members adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the Phase One Development Agreement not to exceed thirty-one million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars with Elevate Inglewood Partners, provided that A, the final terms are consistent with the key commercial terms set forth in Attachment One, and B, the city receives confirmation from local and state grant funding sources that the city's expenditures under the agreement are fully reimbursable singly or in combination from such funding sources.
Okay, before we have a discussion, we're gonna have a ten-minute presentation. Although Lisa has an eighty-page PowerPoint, it's not gonna take eighty pages' worth. But what I want everybody to remember out of this is there's ten million dollars for storefronts in Market Street, two hundred and fifty thousand a storefront. We already have nine hundred million for this project, so we're not going to be dependent upon the federal government to give us that other billion. And this is meant to be an interim phase so that we are able to, if in the future, it may be long after I'm mayor, to do the Transit Connector that we will have already set ourselves up to have a project that's in concert with it that will have been for years mitigating the traffic issues that we have in the city. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Alisa Trifaleti.
As you've heard folks say, you heard the mayor say, this is really about reimagining and rephasing and being responsive to the community feedback that we've received to date. And so what we wanted to share is that we're still solving for the same problem. We have a critical first-last-mile gap between the regional rail system and your major activity centers. We still experience traffic, not just on event days, but we could have it improved even on non-event days. And we had a vision that we got really far, right? With the Inglewood Transit Connector Automated People Mover System. But for, you know, many reasons, it was a project that we cannot afford at this time and to start construction at this point in time would not make it before the Olympics and that would cause disruption, that caused a lot of anxiety by a lot, many people. So we've heard that. We spent time really understanding what can we do? And we want to make sure that the dollars that we've secured with the support from the California Transit Transportation Commission at the state level, at the local level, that we don't let any of those dollars walk away because we have a problem that we need to solve. And we have been working proactively with our grantors to understand how do we keep these dollars here working for us in a re-phase approach? And how do we also then also, you know, work with the FTA so that we can preserve our place on third base, which we've very hard to achieve in a very short amount of time? So as the mayor talked about, this is a re-phase and we want to be activated by the Olympics. It's a one that's based on community priorities, ongoing engagement, and really reinvesting in the downtown area and Market Street. And it looks at successful transit centers throughout the country and locally, even looking at Torrance Transit Center. They have a fabulous program there and we spend a lot of time collaborating with our municipal transit agencies to understand what the possibilities are. And we have been committed to outreach. We remain committed to outreach every step of the way as we move this forward. So what are we talking about? It is a network of mobility hubs that would have bus rotaries, transit amenities, opportunities for pickup and drop-off, access for Uber and Lyft, and parking so we can intercept cars coming in off the road from the four oh five and the one oh five, as well as getting people to use the transit system to have easy transfers from the Metro K Line and the Metro C Line and have dedicated event bus-only lanes, which we will test out to make sure that we understand, you know, working together with your transportation operations team, how it can work so that buses don't get stuck in traffic and incorporate enhanced intelligent transportation system, taking your really good program that you already have to a next level. And there's a number of mobility hubs. One at Market Street and Florence Avenue. This is where we were gonna have our very first station. This is, again, about seven acres. We can bring in and will bring in transit amenities as well as having really attractive places for Uber and Lyft to come and drop off, to intercept, because that is, that's something that we'd like to pursue at the same time with a pedestrian bridge right across the street from the Metro K Line. And we're gonna work on this with our partner, Elevate Inglewood Partners, to really make sure we preserve for the future system, making sure the pedestrian bridge, the locations of all of these amenities are done in a way that it preserves for and anticipates a future transit system. We're gonna work in a parallel path on the right preservation plan, evaluating emerging technologies, looking at station location, station configurations, maintenance facility operations, and really make sure that we work in lockstep with the rest of the city family to make sure setbacks and building footprints and utilities and infrastructure are all done so that you can, when the funding is there and when the time is right, to level up into the next system. Again, we have an opportunity to build a mobility hub at La Brea and Hillcrest. It already is a mobility hub, but we can build up vertically to bring in parking and support the downtown Market Street with ample parking. We have another opportunity at Prairie Avenue and Imperial. It's a great intercept point off the one oh five freeway and we can bring folks into a structure there, put them on a shuttle, and then wrap around, go down Imperial and meet folks at the C Line at Hawthorne Avenue and one-eleventh Street, where a mobility hub was already being contemplated by our partners, Caltrans, the county, Hawthorne, Metro, and other partners. And then bring them up Hawthorne and La Brea where we can run event bus-only lanes. And we've looked at different configurations. We know we have very high ridership, which is exciting. So now it's about how do you right-size the system so you, again, you don't overbuild and we don't have buses stuck in traffic. We want to make sure it all works and that it's moving traffic for everybody. And again, looking at this event day operations plan to support it. The other thing that is an opportunity is while we're looking at this comprehensive plan, we want to assess the feasibility and the ridership demands for a revamped community circulator. So it's not just about event day shuttles, but it's also about having community circulation every day. And you have a couple of programs here. The Inglewood Eye Ride, that's funded out of Lawa. You have employees that live here and work at Lawa and they have a system that's really actually getting a lot of ridership. And you have the Eye Line. So as the mayor mentioned, you have a funded, funding for Market Street, pedestrian and streetscape improvements, tenant and facade improvements, monies for updating the zoning code for Market Street. And we're working in partnership with the county to put together a climate resilience district that not only would fund transit, but could also create a fifty-million-dollar fund for housing. So what is being asked for today is for you to please move forward and approve the contract with Elevate Inglewood Partners. This would all be grant-funded. There would be no authorization until we complete the funding with the state and that's slated for May fifteenth. They have a charge to be done, we're ready for the Olympics. So we have them on a short leash to be able to complete these key items. Today, you are not authorizing construction. You're authorizing us to advance this plan. And we would be willing and able to make sure that we're gonna do this all the while with community workshops and really get feedback in so that before they're authorized on construction, we would have gotten community feedback as well.
Okay.
That was.
Lisa, that was good. That was good. Move items one through four. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Moving on to A one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The record to reflect that the City Council recessed into closed session to discuss item CS one. With respect to this item, the City Council received a presentation from staff. Direction was given, but no final action was taken. Thank you.
A two.
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
CM one.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
CC one, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First, I want to say Happy Earth Day to everyone. And then secondly, next Saturday is Women Rock. We are excited about it, Councilwoman Falk and myself. We are ready, my staff and her staff have really been working diligently and hard. So we would love to see everyone, all of our women, that are registered next Saturday at nine AM. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. CSA two.
Yes, approval of the minutes for the meetings held on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Move.
Second, Madam City Clerk.
Successor Agency Members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the successor agency, Housing Authorities in Session, H two.
Approval of the minutes for the meeting held on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority Members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the Housing Authority. The Parking Authorities in Session, P one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Excuse me, Parking Authorities Members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the Parking Authority. The JPA is in Session, JPA one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Joint Powers Authority Members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the JPA. There are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comment, any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter connected with city business that elsewhere considered may do so at this time for one minute.
Mayor, we did receive public comment in my office and it's been passed out to all mayor and council members.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to mayor and council remarks. Councilwoman Gray, District One.
Thank you very much. I do want to comment, we just approved an item DR one and there was a presentation. And my comments are that I'm really pleased that the city has reimagined or rephased the project. I know that there's been input from the community and I'm pleased that the community came out today to make their own comments. But I do believe that this particular, it is a phase, it's Phase One and think the mayor spoke to it before the presentation. But I do want folks to know that it is a Phase One. It has to do with the transit service, enhancing our busing services. Lisa talked about creating mobility hubs, which is true. But also the fact that I believe that this Phase One will help businesses that may be misdisplaced or misdisplaced. And I believe that there will be something online that will speak to any frequently asked questions. I see Lisa shaking her head. And so I refer the folks, business community or anyone who asks questions about what we did approve to go to the website because it is important to be informed. I know, I believe that Market Street is part of the plan in terms of improving Market Street. That's always a good thing and we had the Miracle Theater owner speak to that. And so I do think moving forward, this is a very positive move. I know this Phase One approach is in partnership with Elevate Inglewood Partners, who will, I believe, will be administering the Phase One approach. So I did want to make those comments. I want to congratulate Councilwoman Falk. I attended her town hall meeting, I believe it was last week. Lots of information, good information there from her department heads. And so I want to congratulate her on that. I want to remind people that my walk-in hours are this Thursday, four to six, at the ICOP Center. Please come in, need no appointment. Be happy to see anyone in the community. Let's see. Tomorrow night is a meeting with my commissioners. Every couple of weeks, I meet with them to talk about projects in District One. It's open to the public, so anyone is free to come in and enjoy that and come to that meeting. Last Sunday, Mr. American, I have another minute, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Last Sunday, at the Miracle Theater, there was a wonderful gospel concert. Grammy Award-winning artist Cory Henry was in concert. I wasn't able to attend. My family and I had a wonderful Easter dinner, but I heard that everyone was on their feet. So congratulations to Owen and Mariana Smith for a wonderful concert there. And I know some of my colleagues have been there and I believe my assistant went to this event. So happy, I hope that everyone had a happy Easter and thank you very much for the extra time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Padilla, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, great report, by the way, very informative. And we appreciate the fact that you, the presentation, you can be very complicated, but you kept. presentation, you can be very complicated, but you kept it, I should say, simple in the sense of informative, yet we could understand it. You didn't try to speak over folks, you know, and use all these complicated verbiage. It's a great project, and we can see how our community is going to benefit, but not only our Inglewood community, but the region. And when we look at these type of changes that we're making in Inglewood, as we did with the Forum, SoFi, the Intuadome, everything is regional, right? So not only does Inglewood benefit, but the region does as well, as they will with this project. So thank you very much. I do want to remind folks that our champions field, as folks call it, the, the soccer and football field over at Vincent Park is going to be resurfaced. The field is going to have new turf, is going to be upgraded, and that'll begin, I believe it's around mid-May, and it'll go until the first of September. So folks, if you use the field, just plan accordingly, because it'll be shut down. So please don't try to climb the fence or sneak in, you know, that's not going to help, okay? Just understand that we're doing this for our youngsters. You saw today, all the young folks that were here, you know, we have a vibrant, young community, and we're doing these changes for the kids and their parents so they can have a place here in Inglewood to go and have fun. Talk about having fun. I know on May 3rd, we're, Deion, you and Aisha are doing the Women's Rock, but also for the rest of us guys, I guess, that are not going to be able to go.
You're coming to bring greetings.
We're going to come and bring greetings, and we get kicked out.
But then we have to leave right away.
Yeah. But that's okay, because we have somewhere to go. Guess where you're going to go? To touch a truck, right? Bring your kids to touch a truck. We're going to have these big tractors, big trucks, ambulances, tow trucks, fire department, police department, and these kids will be able to be there and, and just hang out, talk to the folks that run these trucks. So I want to thank everybody for putting this together, our Public Works folks, Tony, thank you, Thomas, your folks at Parks and Recs for bringing this to our community here in Inglewood. We've been to the ones in other places, now we brought it to Inglewood. So again, that's on May 3rd. It'll be at Rogers, Rogers Park, in the big parking lot right adjacent to the auditorium there. This coming Friday, we're having a food distribution, teaming up, I'm teaming up with Steaks LA. Ricardo Zuniga owns the business there, Mayor, if I can get one minute?
Absolutely.
Uh, it's at Hyde Park and Park. So please, from eight to 10, if you have a family that's in need, send them to us. At the corner of Park and Hyde Park, at Steaks LA, we're going to have a bunch of food to be distributed to families in need. Earth Day, coming up this Saturday, from noon to, I'm sorry, from nine till noon, again at Vincent Park, we're going to gather at the amphitheater, we're going to plant trees and to continue to beautify Vincent Park. So please come out with your family, your kids, let's make, continue to make Vincent Park a beautiful location. Folks, I've received phone calls about, you know, DMV has shut down, they're not going to open, they're going somewhere else, they are not going anywhere else. Calm down. The DMV in Inglewood shut down, why? Because that was built 50 years ago. They're going to renovate it and make it a state-of-the-art facility, a modern facility, and so we're asking for your patience. With that, if you need services, you can go online at DMV.ca.gov or visit the Hawthorne or Culver City locations. With that, oh wait, Cinco de Mayo is coming up. I'm having a Cinco de Mayo dinner with the Knights of Columbus in Westchester and Playa del Rey, so come on out, have dinner with us on Friday, May 2nd, and enjoy your Cinco de Mayo weekend coming up. Thank you.
Okay, no more extra minutes for you.
No more.
Councilwoman Fog. District four.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, so I again want to acknowledge and congratulate our basketball teams for the city of Inglewood, City Parks and Recreations, our director, Thomas Yuall, his staff on a fabulous season. Again, our Boys Division A, regional winners and base winners, Boys Division C, base winners, and Girls Division C, regional winners. Congratulations again. And I want to thank all of the participants in the town hall. It was a really good, it was a little long, I have to admit, it was long, but it was a lot of good information. I want to give a big shout-out to everyone who came out and, and gave a presentation. So really quick, I want to thank, of course, my colleagues here on the dais, our mayor, councilmembers, our city clerk, her staff, our, our administration over here on the side. We have our Louis, our city manager, Louis Adwell, and again, he was supposed to speak, and it kind of got messed up, so I apologize to you, and our city treasurer, our city clerk. I want to thank my, my assistant, Malcolm Patton, he did a great job on that. City came out for the Spanish translation. Social media, wonderful job. Lieutenant Freeman, our director, Chris Jackson, director Tony Olmos and his staff, Kenrick Sanderlin, Bill Thompson, Dr. Jim Morse from IUSD, Ron Massias, he gave a presentation on the I, the I-105 freeway project, Big Noel from LA 28 Olympics. See, if you didn't come, you don't know what he said.
All those people?
Y'all needed to come. And then Robin and Ellie Orwitz with the Big Three LA Riot. Y'all wondering about that, too? Y'all might want to go watch that town hall. We have some really great presentations, so thank you all so much for coming out and supporting the town hall. I appreciate you. I want to lift up Chris Jackson. I attended, I don't know if y'all noticed, but Chris Jackson is a great director at City Hall by day, and at night, he's a great pastor in LA. And so I came out because this was Easter weekend, and I attended his last words at his church, and he did an amazing job. So congratulations to him. I also want to lift up my assistant, who is also a pastor, y'all didn't know that, so, you know, so they, they lift, all of us lifted up in prayer. So I wanted to acknowledge them because they did a great job and wanted to let them know that thank you all so much for continuing to support and keep us in prayer. There's a great picture of us at his church right there. And then, let's see, next up, Women Rock, city clerk, already announced it, Women Rock is going down, y'all. We have Malia Cohen, our constitutional officer, coming down from Sacramento, and she is going to bring a keynote. Also Judge May Blin, hopefully you guys remember her. She is a dynamic speaker and also very rich and very active on the legal scene in this, and also on social media. And then we have Yo-Yo, and she is an entertainment mogul turned nonprofit mogul, so she has some great words to bring for us, for Women Rock. So make sure you get your tickets. If you haven't, you're going to miss out. Lastly, Mayor, I want to end on some good notes, not a bad note, good note. I want to bring a happy birthday greeting to our fabulous chair of the Parking and Traffic Commission, Barbara Hibbler. Happy birthday, Ms. Hibbler. I also want to bring a happy birthday to Vicki Paramon Banks. She is our commissioner for the Arts Commission. There she is. Happy birthday, Vicki. We appreciate all of our commissioners, they work so hard for the city of Inglewood. Thank you so much, Mayor, appreciate you.
Thank you. How long has that been blinking, Thomas? How long has it been?
Five minutes, Mayor, five minutes.
I know you're not giving me a hard time now.
That was longer, longer than your town hall meeting, man. I, I, I'm losing, I'm losing control. Councilman Morales, show them how it's done.
I was there the whole time, beyond that town hall meeting in the back, okay? A couple of things, just like, everything was covered, so I won't repeat everything. They, you know, the big deal today was the ITC project, you know, it was a great presentation, Lisa, and of course, the mayor managed to get all the pillars of our community out here, which was great. But the one thing that will be spoken about is like, where are we with the ITC and everything else? The truth is that the first version of the ITC that you saw about a couple of years ago, it just didn't, it didn't work out for us. It didn't make sense. At the end of the day, financially, it wasn't going to be there. In the long run, it wasn't going to work for us. But, you know, the pivot, and credit to Lisa and, and our staff here to ensure that we figure out how to use some of these grant funds and how to make what we want in Inglewood happen with those grant funds. And that's what you're watching now. This is progress. This is the first step in that progress, and, you know, we'll move it right along until we see what we need here in the city of Inglewood. We all understand the value we have in Market Street. It really is a jewel. We have to get as much out of it as we can, and that's what we're doing here today, so I'm proud of what happened. And then I would like to point out, the kids that came today, Thomas, thank you for your staff coming out, and, and the coaches, right? Those programs are so important. I, I still remember my first coach here in the city of Inglewood, his name was Mike, and he passed away, worked for, for our city for many, many years, and I would see him, and every day that I saw him, I would say, you was my first coach here in the city of Inglewood. So they mean something, those guys, and I appreciate their time, and I appreciate you, what you do out there, Thomas. Thank you. Mayor, that's it, that's how we do it.
See, that's how you do it. So I'm going to use some of your last minute, because Councilwoman Gray had one more announcement to make. You have 54 seconds.
You're welcome.
Oh, I do? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please show the picture. You know, oftentimes, a school district, it does not always receive good comments, right? But we have a county administrator, Dr. Morris, that's wonderful, and the board, and, and the teachers and everyone there. This is a picture of a ceremony, an award ceremony, last week at the Miracle Theater. These students, they were awarded because they received 4.50 GPA. That is outstanding. And I have to say, you see the tall, young man there? That is my grandson, and so I'm super proud. He goes to City Honor. Michael Hector is his name, 4.5, all of those standing there. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that.
That was Grandma looking out for the grandkid.
Okay, okay, congratulations. Okay, so once again, congratulations to the basketball champions. I'm very curious as to how we won everything, but I'm glad we did. Better check those refs. Okay, so this is what losing looks like in Inglewood. Instead of getting $2 billion, we get $1 billion. We are positioning ourselves to get the lost traffic that's used to go to Santa Monica Promenade. Just think about what we are right now. We have three major venues within half a mile of one another. We have four and a half million to five million people a year coming to the city of Inglewood. It's only natural that we would invest in Market Street.